Heavenly Father, we ask that you bless this board in our decision-making. Bless our city, our country and its leaders. Watch over our troops and bring them home safely. We ask this in your name. Amen.
Amen.
(inaudible) United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Attorney, would you call the first case, please, ma'am?
(inaudible).
Sorry.
Chairman Norris.
Here.
Robert in Serpents.
Here.
Mark Nussbaum.
Here.
Roger Brunswick.
Here.
Pete Pastore.
Here.
Richard Donnelly.
Here.
Frank Lyles.
Here.
Yes, I'll start the first case. It's PD 1307-310 BOS. This is Cape Hickory Residential Plan Development in District 3. The request is to amend a zoning ordinance, number 03-13. Benita Villa's Residential Plan Development has subsequently amended to remove Condition 4 from zoning ordinance 03-13, requiring that all structures, including models, be sprinkled. I'm not sure about that. I'm going to let Jackie Genson proceed with the case, but this time I'll swear her in. Do you swear or firm testimony you provide the truth, whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
And you've been previously been tendered as an expert in land use?
That's correct.
Please proceed.
For the record, Jaclyn Genson, before I get up and start my PowerPoint, it was brought to my attention that I got a little ahead of myself and didn't have the accurate address on the agenda for the Cape Hickory project. The strap numbers were correct, and I did talk with legal. It still is legally sufficient for advertisement purposes, but the Cape Hickory RPD originally did have a Hickory Boulevard address. Since then, it has been subdivided and platted. So you'll see the property right here before you on the screen. This is Cape Hickory Court, and this is the subject property that is before you today. It has five single-family homes. Again, they each have their own address, but it is directly off of Hickory Boulevard.
Okay, again, for the record, Jaclyn Genson with Community Development. The request before you is to amend an existing RPD that was originally approved in 2003. It was also amended in 2012 for some docs. Why you're here today is when it was originally rezoned, based on the type of the construction at the time, the fire marshal at the time put a condition in the zoning ordinance that all buildings had to be sprinkled. So since it is part of the zoning ordinance itself, and based on the request, staff felt it was most appropriate to take it through this process procedurally, to amend it through the public hearing process versus an administrative amendment. So that is why this case is before you today. Based on conversations with the fire department and the building official, and the applicable standards under the Florida Building Code, and the National Fire Prevention Association Code, the buildings do not have to be sprinkled. So staff did recommend approval of the request, and this is a very unique situation. Typically, you won't find these types of condition in zoning ordinances, but for some reason in 2003, it was put in this document. So that is why it's here before you today. And again, just reiterating the process per land development code, we had to go through this process to go ahead and eliminate this condition. All other conditions will remain in place. Based on the condition of approval, we went ahead and, well, this kind of gives you the history of it. Again, we're just removing that Condition 4 in zoning ordinance 03-13. Everything else remains in place. The condition is that all structures have to meet applicable fire and building codes. That's all we're going to do. That's what every structure has to do when it comes in for residential building permit, has to meet the applicable fire and building codes. So with talking with Tim Fernandez from Benita Springs Fire, we felt it was most appropriate to leave the condition as general as possible, let the applicable fire and building codes apply. Again, all other conditions of approval from previous zoning ordinances and administrative amendments will remain in full force and effect. In terms of public notification, the property did receive, I received two phone calls. One was just wanting to know exactly what the request was about. The other one, there was, it's in your packet, I did receive an email of no objection, where the property owner is very comfortable with the proposed change. So there were no public objections to this change. This is the location map again. This is Hickory Boulevard. This is the Cape Hickory RPD. It's five single-family homes that are subject of this request. Comprehensive plan consistency, again, they're not changing anything. It's allowable use. They're allowed to have single-family. Fire and building codes really are not mentioned in the comprehensive plan, so the request as conditioned is consistent with the comprehensive plan. And based on the findings in our land development code, we found that the amendment request was consistent, therefore staff recommended approval. And that concludes our presentation, very short and brief, so if there's any questions I'd be happy to answer. And Tim Fernandez is also here and the applicant.
Any questions from the board?
I have a quick question. You said April 2003, it was approved, and what do you think at that time was the rationale for the sprinklers?
From our understandings, and I did talk to Chip Block, who was the planner at the time on the case, and conversations with the applicant, the type of construction they were going to use had to deal with wood. So based on that type of construction, the building codes at the time, it required those buildings to be sprinkled. Right now, the building construction type has changed.
Okay. So they have to do the same thing that any other single-family home would be required to do?
Correct. And I do have Tim Fernandez here from the fire department, if you'd like him to kind of elaborate.
No, I was just curious why it was added back in '03.
And there really was no detail in the staff report, even the backup. So I was just going on some verbal conversations with Chip Block from Lee County and the applicant, and that's all we can surmise.
Anyone else from the board have any questions? We would then entertain...
Public comment?
Well, yes. I tell you what, I should read my notes, right? Public comment at this time? Hearing none or seeing none, then we will entertain a motion.
I'm making a motion to approve as presented.
Okay, we have a motion second?
No, I did.
I'll second.
Okay. Any discussion?
Board?
Comments from the board?
Sorry.
No comments.
Okay, we'll have a real call, please, ma'am.
Chairman Norris.
Here, yes.
Robert in Serpents.
Yes.
Mark Nussbaum.
Yes.
Roger Brunswick.
Yes.
Pete Pastore.
Yes.
Richard Donnelly.
Yes.
Frank Lyles.
Yes.
Thank you.
We'll proceed with the next case. I'm going to call it into the record. This is PD 1367-58 BOS, Benita Springs Center for the Arts. It's a community facilities, bleh, I'm sorry. It's to be said, 4.169 acres of land from mobile home, two family conservation, C-1A commercial, C-1 commercial, two community facilities planned development to allow performing arts facility, located at 27911 Vermont Street in Benita Springs. Mr. McKee, do you want to come up here with Mrs. Bridges? If you want, and at this time I'll swear in the witness, whoever...
They may have some questions they might need to answer.
Okay. At this time, let me swear you in, Mr. McKee and Ms. Genson. May I have you raise your right hand? Do you swear firm testimony you're going to provide is truth, whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
No.
And you've been previously, Ms. Genson, you've been previously tendered as an expert in land use and planning, and Mr. McKee, you've been previously tendered as an expert in civil engineering?
Correct.
Okay. And do you have anybody else you'd like me to swear in at this time?
I'd like to introduce before we start Jackie McErdie, who is the president of the Board of Directors at the Center for the Arts. Susan Bridges, who's the executive director at the Center for the Performing Arts. And John Spear is a past board member, and he's also the pro bono attorney for the Center for the Arts this morning. And he would be available to answer any questions that you might have.
And we will swear them in at that time. If you'll proceed.
Thank you.
I'm going to try to be brief this morning. I'm sure you'd rather listen to Jackie than you would me, and also look at Jackie instead of me, but, so we'll just go quite quickly. Our request is outlined in your staff report is to rezone the current Living Waters Church on Vermont Street, which fronts Benita Beach Road between Vermont Street and Iowa Street. Location map. It's just west of Old 41 and just west of the railroad tracks, right on Benita Beach Road. But we're going to rezone it from TFC 2, C-1, C-1A, and MH 2 to a community facilities planned development, with an eventual change in use from a place of worship, because it is the Living Waters Church now, to a schedule of uses that are related to a community-type facility, and we'll go over those schedule of uses in a couple of minutes. I want you to note that the place of worship and the new schedule of uses will overlap for a period of time, so both entities will be occupying this building for a certain period, and Mr. Spear can go into that more if there are any questions on that. Living Waters is currently in the process of relocating their operation to another place in the city. I won't spend much time on the adjacent zoning of the uses. Jackie has some very good presentations on that. Needless to say, we think we're pretty consistent with what's there and what's in the aerial or what's in the area. This is the existing conditions or the current Living Waters Church, the main building, which is the big square rectangle in the lower portion, is a 399-seat sanctuary. The smaller building to the north central portion of, or the west central portion of the property is a multipurpose building. Both of those are currently used by the church. Our proposed site plan surprisingly looks exactly the same. The church is not proposing any changes whatsoever to the outside of this facility. The only work that, I'm sorry, the Center for the Arts does not propose any changes. The only work that the center is expecting to do is interior remodel of the sanctuary area to turn it into a true performing arts center after the church leaves the facility. We don't expect to have to do any limited review development orders, development orders or any other site plan changes once this is in effect. This is what you are more used to seeing as a traditional master concept plan. It includes our notes and our notations, our schedule of deviations. There are five deviations. I'm going to let Jackie go into those in detail, but basically they deal with parking, with landscaping, and with the length of parking aisles themselves. There are five of those. Again, staff is in agreement with us that they are an acceptable deviation request. Schedule of uses is also in your staff report. Again, I'll be very brief. Jackie may go into it in more detail. Do note on there that we still have place of worship. That is a use that will continue probably maybe as late as into the spring of next year. Again, Mr. Spear can comment more on that if there are any concerns. Please note that there is a consumption on premises request. In talking to Susan Bridges, it's called an 11PA, and it's specifically in the state statutes for a performing arts theater, and allows the serving of alcohol before and during the performing arts events that they will have. The Center for the Arts does have a history of working with consumption on premises permits. They have pulled numerous temporary permits for various activities that they've held around the city, both at different locations as well as at their campus that they currently have on Old 41 Road. As I mentioned, there's five deviations. I'm going to let Jackie talk about those a little bit. She can do a much better job. There is one additional thing that I do want to bring to your attention, and I'll start the discussion, and I'm sure that Audrey and Jackie will chime in. Condition 4 of your staff report has been modified as a result of this group and myself meeting with city staff. Chap, that paragraph 4 will be replaced, or that the list in paragraph 4 will be replaced by this single paragraph. And again, I'll let Jackie explain it a little bit. It basically says that the church and the city agree to work on any issues that may develop from the result of the traffic that's generated by this facility. In summary, we're basically, we're trading one performance center for another. We're trading a church for a performing arts theater. They're basically the same size and the same type of operation, except that the church typically performs on Wednesday and Saturday nights and Sunday mornings. The Art League is going to have events more often during the week and possibly Saturdays once the church moves their operation to their other location. We actually feel that the Center for the Arts will be a less intense use at this location. The church, in addition to their 399 parishioners, also uses the multipurpose building for Sunday school classes and for some adult education classes that go on at the same time as the church service. So they may have as many as 500 or 550 people there at one time, whereas the performing arts center will be limited to the 399 people. That's basically a fire code or an occupancy code with that building. So with that, if there's not any questions now, I'll let Jackie get into the more minute details of this request.
Do we have any questions for?
I have a question.
Yes, go ahead.
The 399 seating capacity of the performing arts center and 191 parking spaces, is that, Jackie, is that, is that acceptable?
Yes, based on the calculations that they provided, they have surface parking, and they also have grass parking and gravel parking. It's one of the deviation requests.
Right.
So they will have sufficient parking for the use.
So the 191 parking spaces that is mentioned here, the existing parking in paragraph B, page 4, that does or does not include the grass and gravel?
Like, Dave?
It does. There's a total of 191 spaces, and they're broken down as follows. 73 paved spaces, 39 grass spaces, and 79 gravel spaces, for a total of 191. This is described in deviation number 1. Based on the land development codes, chapter 4, 20-17, for total space requirements, this facility needs 163 high turnover criteria spaces. That means all paved. We've asked for a deviation to allow the existing 191 spaces in their current form to be acceptable for the performing arts center, for the Center for the Arts. So we have more than enough spaces, we just don't meet the exact criteria that are spelled out in the land development code for the type of spaces.
Follow-up question. What's the additional, the small building in the rear of the property, the western side of the rear of the property? What will that be used for, just storage or?
No, the Center for the Arts will function somewhat like they do now. They actually have overflow summer school classes, for instance, on their campus at Old 41. They may use this for summer school classes. It has a very small theater in it where you might be able to sit 200 or 300 or 200 people, 100 people, something in that range. They might use it for smaller performances. Yes, you can use it for storage, you can use it for classrooms, you can use it for administrative offices. There's any number of uses, hence the multipurpose designation.
Thank you.
Mr. Bassett, or?
Jackie, with serving liquor at the location by the church, will that have any effect on them? In other words, are they going to be able to serve liquor? You mentioned they're going to have beer and wine, I guess, or liquor?
Correct, and that's very normal with performing arts centers, to have beverage service during shows. I surmise that the church and the performing arts center have discussed that while they are sharing the space, how they go ahead and do that. But as part of this request, staff did recommend approval for the performance center arts use only for them to serve during shows.
Well, we just had the other church that wanted to buy the place on 41. I thought it might have, if it affected or not.
Well, again, because this is a planned development, we're able to go ahead and approve certain uses through this process, and that's why it's before you today as one of the schedule of uses to allow this use. But at one point, you know, the church use will go ahead and relocate, and it will just be the performing center arts use. So at one time, you know, the place of worship use won't be a question. I mean, because you're not going to have both uses operating at the same time.
Well, the other church wasn't either. I just wondered if it's allowable. Is it, Audrey?
If we have questions for Jackie, let's let her make her presentation, then we can ask her questions. In the meantime, do we have anything else from Mr. McKee? She may cover a lot of this in her presentation.
I did, I apologize, I did keep it brief. I thought Jackie would be better prepared to discuss some of these things, and I want you to have a comfort level that staff and the applicant, the Center for the Arts are in agreement in all these things, so, but I think Jackie can do a little bit better job with her presentation.
Okay, do we have any more questions for Mr. McKee? Okay. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Would you do me a favor, please? If you're referring to the packet, would you just give us a page number so we can get right back to you? Please, thank you.
There, boy.
Okay, for the record, Jaclyn Genson with Community Development.
Enter you.
I won't go over the request again since it was read before you, and Dave McKee covered it, but essentially, because of the types of uses that they're asking for in the current zoning of the property, this property had to be rezoned to allow the performing arts use and its ancillary uses. Originally, staff and the applicant were thinking about just doing a conventional rezoning to a CF district, but given the site's current configuration and some of the deviations they needed, it was more appropriate to go ahead and do a CFPD to allow them to ask for deviations, and it also gave staff comfort so we could condition the use because of its location off of Benita Beach Road, but also in the back because of the neighborhood. So we felt this was the most appropriate process to go through for this type of use. Staff did recommend approval with conditions, and I'd be happy to go over some of the conditions in detail if you'd like, which they start on page 2 of your staff report. It's part 2A. And number 1 is your general condition, you have to be consistent with the master concept plan. Number 2 really gets into your meat. It's your schedule of uses, and Mr. McKee did show the schedule uses on there, but what staff wanted to do was really iron out what the main uses are. Some of the uses, they had to be very specifically in conjunction with the performing center arts use. And then there's also some ancillary uses that the facility wanted to have, such as their administrative offices, and a educational component for adult and children education art classes, lectures, and whatnot. So those are really ironed out in condition 2 for the schedule of uses. Condition 3 deals with the deviations, which I will go into more detail later in terms of what they're requesting, why staff is in agreement. But essentially, is if this center of the arts use changes and it goes away, the next user has to come in and amend the plan development or do some other type of zoning action, so they could also utilize the same deviations. Because some of the deviations, again, with parking material buffering, we felt for this use was appropriate because the uses are very similar in impact and intensity and visual aesthetics. So staff recommended in condition 3 that yes, we'll grant you these deviations, however, if the use changes, the future successor will have to come in and talk to the city and see, you know, if those deviations would still be applicable to them. Condition 4, I'll go over later in more detail with the traffic. Again, like Mr. McKee said, city staff and the applicant met last week to go over the condition of the traffic. Because the uses are, they are similar in nature, and the peak times are going to be a little bit different, we wanted to provide more flexibility in traffic conditions, instead of narrowing them into you have to provide XYZ and having to come back and amend the conditions. So the way the condition is worded, and I will show it to you in detail, it provides a greater level of flexibility for both the city and the applicant to work together should traffic problems arise. We don't anticipate them to be because the, when the performance times will be after peak hours, but just in case. The other conditions we went over, very generic, your boilerplate conditions that we would put in in any planned development rezoning, in terms of we really want to practice green building, traffic impacts, street lighting, so certain things that our code already regulates, but it's just your boilerplate conditions. So those are the conditions. Moving on, this is the location of the property. If you're not familiar with it, it's right down the road. You'll see Benita Beach Road right here. The property does have two access points off of Iowa Street and Vermont, so they have median accesses here, and it goes all the way back, and here's New York Street. And New York Street's a gravel road, it's a private road, so it, this is the gravel parking, or, yeah, the gravel stabilized parking area here. There's a buffer wall here, and there's adequate buffering all around the property here. Here we have some very nice slashed pines and some eureka palms, so it is, it does have some existing vegetation, and again, I'll go over that in the deviation section. Regarding the surrounding property, future land use and zoning use, to the south, it has a land use classification of general commercial. You have the Montero apartments that are there, so it's residential multifamily, but you have the four-lane section of Benita Beach Road separating it. To the east, this is vacant commercial property that's undeveloped. Here you have an existing legal non-conforming mobile home park. To the north, you have some single-family residential homes that are zone TFC 2. To the west, we have, again, some more existing residential single-family homes, and then you have the Rick Johnson auto service area to the west as well. These are just some site photos if you did not make it out to the site. Here is a section fronting Benita Beach Road, so you can see the distance from Benita Beach Road, has wonderful vegetation. This is on the west side off of Vermont Street, so again, you'll see the buffering, the trees. This is the multipurpose building in the back that will remain on site. And here, this is on Iowa Street. So this is the existing facility, there's a playground up in the front, but you'll see, again, buffering that's already existing and in place. This is the back half of the lot, so towards the north. This is, again, on Iowa Street. The church building is here, but you'll see it has a nice wall here, but this is where the low turnover parking will be. So when they do have their special events, oh, sorry, their performing theater, their theater performances, which they anticipate having during season, so if they do have a full-capacity theater, this is what this area is here for. Again, it's existing parking for the church, they're going to use it as a low turnover, low turnover parking for when they have performances. Very appropriate, and the unique thing with this is, we actually got a call from a neighbor who was concerned that they were going to pave the lot. And their concern is, is because there are neighborhood children that use and play this, play in this lot. So they actually wanted, they were concerned that we were going to go ahead and make them pave it. So they're very happy that it's staying the way it is so the kids can still play in this lot. So giving staff a little more comfort and allowing them to use the property as it is. The future land use and zoning of the property, again, it has two land use classifications. It has a residential land use classification, classification in the rear of the property where the low turnover parking is, and towards the front where the main facility is, it's general commercial. For zoning, it has a whole mix of zoning categories. The church use is there because they got a special exception back in 2005, so that is why the church was able to operate under its current zoning, and then this use has to come in and get a rezoning. And again, the current use is for a place of worship. They do have services twice a week, and they do also have a full functioning daycare that operates in the mornings all the way through the end of the day. So it is quite utilized facility. So based on the proposed uses, they are very similar in nature in terms of when the church leaves and the performing arts comes in. Mr. McKee, did you go over the master concept plan? So again, like he said, nothing's really changing, and if they do do it in addition later on, then, you know, staff will be able to look at it then, but they anticipate no changes to the external site, just mainly internal remodel items, which, you know, the building and fire code would go ahead and take effect. I don't know why I have this in here twice, but deviations, as Mr. McKee said, there's five different deviations that are being requested, so I'll go over each one. Deviation 1 is the, requires that all parking lots... Deviation one is the, requires that all parking lots have, be paved. Certain parking lots can be gravel, but this type of use, it should be paved. Against, based on the neighborhood input and based on when and how often the parking would be used, staff felt that it was appropriate for them to also maintain the same surface parking areas as exists today. When the facility is in full operation, as Mr. McKee said, they have over 70 spaces that are paved. We don't need to require them to put more impervious on the site. When you have your performing arts theater performances twice a week during season, then you can use the low turnover areas over here. So staff felt that that was a reasonable request. But again, if the use changes and someone else wants to come in, you're going to have to ask for the same deviation. So staff recommended approval with conditions on deviation one. Deviations two through four are buffer requirements. And it's for each section of the street. And I'll go over it in the map on the next slide. I remember in the site photos I showed you, there's existing buffers all along the paved areas. So you have a type D like buffer with a hedge and trees. So this area where all the activity is going to be located is very much buffered from the residential and commercial uses. Towards the back is where they're asking for some relief on the buffering requirements. And as you remember from the photos, there's a lot of existing vegetation that's there. A lot of slash pines that provide some canopy shade, some eureka palms along New York Street. So staff felt that was appropriate. And again, the neighborhood kids like using this lot. So staff felt that it was inappropriate. Mr. Kirby did look at this as part of the request and he was very comfortable with leaving the site as is in existing conditions for this use. Deviation five has to deal with putting in an island for a shade canopy. Again, it's an existing site, so staff's not going to make them put in an island with a tree. So we felt that was very appropriate to leave existing conditions as they are. Regarding public notification, received a couple of phone calls, no objection. Again, one from the neighborhood about their kids being able to play in the yard. Another person who owns property, he lives out in California. He's excited that, you know, the performing arts is coming. So nothing but good things with this request. Comprehensive plan consistency, again, two different land use classifications. Originally, staff was contemplating having the Center of the Arts go through a land use map amendment for the parking. But then we were thinking, you know, that's probably not a good idea because then you're further allowing commercial encroachment into a neighborhood. So since they are a public, semi-public use, which is allowed on a limited basis in that residential category, we felt that through the plan development process, we can condition it where it is compatible and it is appropriate. So based on that, we found it consistent with the comprehensive plan. And for the front portion of the site where you have your general commercial, that's where all the activity is happening. So and again, public, semi-public uses are allowed. So it was, it's consistent with the comprehensive plan from a land use perspective. Transportation, based on the traffic information that was submitted to our office, it is operating at a level of service C. Comp plan requires that you can only allow capacity if it's at a level of service E or better. So the road is not failing at this time for this use. And as they said, the uses are very similar in traffic patterns. And most of the performances will be towards the end of the traffic peak times. So we really don't think that there's going to be an adverse impact on the traffic conditions. And again, so the revision of condition four, this is it now. Again, what it recognizes is that the uses that exist today and that will be replaced with the center of the arts use are very similar in intensity. But should traffic, you know, concerns arise during like performances because of the ingress and egress, we will get together as a team, the city and the applicant, and figure out ways through traffic controls to better manage traffic if there is a situation. They're thinking that shows are going to start seven o'clock at night. So by that time, traffic should be fine during season. And if something should arise, we have a condition in here that allows us to work together to go ahead and manage that issue should it arise. But our traffic consultant doesn't think, based on what their hope, what they've said in their application request, that it should be a problem. But we want to have some safeguards in case there are. So based on the findings in Land Development Code for rezoning to a CFPD, staff felt that they've met the intent of the Land Development Code. The deviations do enhance the plan development. The use is appropriate and compatible as requested and conditioned. So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Okay, any questions?
Yeah, I'd like to have one if I can.
Go ahead. Pete, go ahead.
Yeah, on the second page, under scheduled uses, you've got consumption on the premises, you've got worship.
Are you speaking on mic, Mr. Pastore?
I couldn't hear you.
Thank you.
Okay, you got under uses, you got consumption on premises, and then you also have place of worship. Now, can they have a consumption next to a church?
Again, based on this application request, we are allowing that use to occur. So, and at that time, and because they share the property, there's definitely an agreement between the church and the Center of Performing Arts to have that use. And I'm not even sure, maybe the applicant can describe, I don't even think alcohol will be served until the theater is fully converted.
I don't, I'll have to swear her in. I think the question you're asking is normally if there's a setback between a church and someplace with a liquor license, is in this situation because it's at the same location and no setback, is that the reason why you're not going through needing a variance?
Well, it's the 500 feet requirement. But again, because it's part of a planned development, we can go ahead and deviate from code. But they're not a bar. It's, it's an ancillary use to performing arts facility. I'll double check the code, but staff didn't have a problem with the request. And the church has no opposition either to my, it makes sense they're working together.
The reason I'm asking, we just had, or the city council had a case where a church was going to go into Maria's and they couldn't have, no?
That's something different, though. That's a totally different reason.
Yeah, if I may, as an officer of the court, if I can explain that. We were, city was adopting an ordinance in its Old 41 overlay area that prohibited certain uses. And one of the uses that prohibited in that is a house of worship in very specific areas. Obviously not the entire downtown area, but in small areas where you would want to have foot traffic Monday through Friday. And generally, a house of worship, the use is not as compatible with the other types of uses you're trying to have in that area. There is a church that is doing their due diligence and trying to acquire that property. During the hearing, they talked about wanting to operate a restaurant. I said, well, that you can do. I mean, we don't care if the restaurant is a religious facility. That's perfectly fine. And again, there was nothing as to an alcohol issue in that regard. It was just the actual conducting of a church at that location. And I believe they're coming up to ask council for additional, so stay tuned on that information. But that, the fact pattern there is very different than Benita Beach Road overlay, which does not have restrictions.
This would affect regardless of the overlay, any place else the church can't be within so many. I'm just asking the question, why are we going to allow this when you wouldn't allow the other? It's the same difference.
Because it's apples and oranges based on location.
Yeah, well, it's the same difference they want. In other words, they're basing the same A and B. I just wondered, is this going to be, you've got children in there and you've got a playground. And it's just a matter of they got liquor. I'm not opposed to the program. It's just that we are trying to be consistent with your alcohol.
I'd be happy to answer. The supplemental regulations in the Land Development Code for on premises consumption, we do have location requirements for separation, but there are exceptions to those rules. And this would be something that's very equivalent. We do exempt bowling alleys, restaurants if they're indoors, hotels, motels, golf course clubhouses, tennis clubs, clubs or fraternal membership organizations. So they're very similar in nature. So that, even that distance requirement would not necessarily, in my opinion, be applicable in this case.
But they don't have a place of worship in any one of those things you just mentioned. I'm just saying it because it's a church and children and a parking lot. And I didn't, I don't know if it's appropriate to have the liquor and it's an exception.
Well, I'll let the applicant go ahead and decide that since they're in direct discussion.
Let John answer it.
Actually, you're an officer of the court, so I will not swear you in unless you wish to be sworn in.
It's your call.
As a fact witness.
It's your call.
Are you, do you feel you're being a fact witness?
Yeah, I think I am, yes.
Okay, let's swear you in.
When in doubt.
Okay, do you swear affirm that the testimony you're going to provide is the truth, all truth, nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Please state your full name.
John Spear, resident of Benita Springs. And I'm the attorney for the Center for the Arts. And as Dave indicated, I'm here to talk a little bit about the joint use. And I think, Pete, going to your question, I think, I think I can be some help here. The, the joint use that we've agreed to has been, is it really transitional joint use to get the living waters folks time to get their, their new location remodeled and up and running? It is frankly going to be next season, next, next spring is when it's going to be joint use. Now, at no time, we've had our very detailed discussions and we have a very detailed agreement, at no time are we both going, both organizations going to be using the same building. The church is going to be using, for example, the church is going to be using the building from Saturday afternoon until Sunday afternoon for the Saturday night and Sunday morning church services and getting set up and tearing down. And then they're going to be gone until Wednesday when they have Wednesday evening functions. They're going to be there 15, 20 hours and they're going to be gone. And the Art League, on the other hand, the Center for the Arts, on the other hand, is going to be filling in the other periods of time. There will be no instances where there's going to be consumption on permit, consumption on premises when there are children there. The church largely is going to have relocated their nursery and those sort of services when we close on the property in February. And so that, so that's, and the other thing is, this is, we're not opening a bar. We're not going to be open five days, six days, seven days a week from noon until 10 o'clock at night. We're going to be serving alcohol. And that's what this, this performing arts permit is all about. It's to allow the service of alcohol in conjunction with artistic performances, not whenever you want to stop by and have a cocktail or a beer or a glass of wine. So, so it's going to be a place of worship on one day. It's going to be a performing arts center on the other day. And so I hope that answers your concerns.
Do they only meet what, once a week?
Pardon?
You say they only meet once a week?
What's that, the church?
No, the arts.
Well, we, we expect during the season where there's joint, where there's going to be joint performances, there may be, as, there may be weeks where there'll be a Thursday, a Tuesday night, a Thursday night and a Friday night performance. There won't be anything on Wednesday because the church is going to have control of the building on Wednesdays. There won't be a Saturday night or Sunday morning performances because there will be, the church will have control of the building at those points of time. The other days, it'll be, it'll be the other way around. So it's, it's, it's a consecut, it's not a simultaneous use. At no time will we be using
I got you.
the, the, the building for both. It'll be either a house of worship or performing arts and those ancillary services. Did that help?
But, but while there is performing arts, if a family comes to see the performing arts and alcohol, alcohol is served, there could be younger family members there.
Like any restaurant or like, like any place else. But again, it will be only in conjunction with performances. It's not, again, it's not, nobody's going to come to this facility to consume alcohol. They're going to, they're going to come to consume art, the arts and have, and have a, have a snack and maybe a drink during that process, just like in any other performing arts facility.
Any other questions at this time?
I have a question for Jackie.
Go ahead.
So the, the staff then is okay with the amount of impervious surface?
Correct.
Okay.
We're big fans of not paving, use the parking.
The last, the last time I drove through the parking lot in the rear, that road, dirt road, was in disrepair and there were several potholes where water was sitting. So there is some maintenance that needs to be done or some minor repair.
Yeah, I don't think, I have to check.
Because I don't want to paint the rosy picture that the road is perfect because it's not.
It's not at all. It's, it's very much in disrepair. But I am not of the opinion that people would be using that road. And the reason why I say that is the ingress and egress for that lot is here. And that's the only place that they can park. They're not going to be parking over here. It's in the gravel designated spots. And for them to go ahead and leave, I mean, they have to come out Iowa Street or Vermont Street. So they should not be using this road and.
It was mostly the parking area that I was talking about. There were vehicles parked on the left and the right. And as, as I drove between them,
Because.
There were many dips in the road or in the parking area.
In the parking area? I didn't drive through the parking area, so. But if there is a concern, I guess, while it's accurate.
Again, John Spear, for the record, in our conversations with the church and both of the joint use and then going forward, we have had discussions about sort of improving some of the conditions of the, of the parking lot towards the rear. Again, we're, and this, this is, it's rather the same concept. We've brought to the question of traffic and everything else is that we are, we are inviting patrons to come and to use this facility and pay good dollars to use this facility. And so the Art League is, Center for the Arts, I'm still old school on that, continues to, is really committed to upgrading things to the point necessary that where this will be an attractive place to watch a high quality artistic performance. So that, those things will be, those things will be addressed. Iowa Street behind there, that's a private road. And there are, there's some of the problems with the potholes. And my inspection out there goes to the fact that the neighbors have put speed bumps on that private road. And people drive around the speed bumps and that's where the big potholes are, towards the edge of the property. But again, we are committed to, really to the safety of our patrons, whether it's traffic or the condition of the, of the parking lots and those sort of things. And we'll make, we'll be very sure that we're, that our patrons are taken care of. But thanks for the question.
Any other questions for, yes, sir, go ahead.
Jackie, as, as the use changes, will there be any need for any change outside? For example, if things are being sold, will, will they need outdoor trash receptacles or pedestrian lighting?
Well, see, here's the unique situation. I don't think they're going to trigger a scenario where they, they need more. But because this is simply a pure change of use and they're not triggering an LDO or DDO requirement, staff doesn't really look at those items. It's when you modify the site a certain percentage where if it's not to code, it needs to be brought to code. But I wouldn't anticipate any problems. But that's when our chapter three kicks in in terms of lighting. So if they change out lighting, you know, it's going to have to meet our dark skies ordinance if it doesn't already. And then if they increase capacity, you know, they're going to have to provide the appropriate dumpster size requirements in accordance with chapter three.
And when they talk about the transition of uses, should that, should, should it be left open ended? Because it could be this season, could be next season, could be three years from now.
Yeah, we left in a chapter, or sorry, condition two, I believe is where I have it. And like Mr. Spear said, both uses are going to be operating on different days. So we didn't feel that there was going to be an issue in terms of impacts. Because when you look at a use in general, you figure it's going to be there 100% of the time, you know. But in this case, we wanted to give the applicant and the church enough flexibility that they could coexist together until the church has their new facilities. But that doesn't mean that they're going to be operating at the same time because then you double your intensity and impacts.
I'm just saying the, the economy could, you know, decline again and it could go on like many of the other projects that we've had in the city.
If I may, I think a concern with the condition as currently drafted, and I probably would need some input from you if you want changes, is that I can understand the coexistence with the existing facility or the existing church. But what if the existing church leaves and a new church wishes to come in and the Center for Arts, I don't, I'm not saying that they would do this, but say, well, let me do this because I can earn a little extra money by allowing services or allowing the daycare facility to operate with a different provider. Because remember, when you're doing zoning, you're not looking at who the person is or who the church is or who, you know, who the center is. You're looking at what the use is at that particular property and whether it continues to be compatible.
If you want, then we can modify the.
I don't have a problem with the transition. I just don't think it should be open ended.
You might want to have. You might want to have a durational period at what time do you call it quits, whether it is 10 years, five years, one year.
Duration, are you limited to Living Waters?
Again, that goes to a person, you know, the, I mean, I guess we could go the existing provider.
I'll let the applicant go ahead and...
For the record, Dave McKee, I understand what you're asking here and what Audrey's talking about and they got a little conference going on here. I think that the question, I think maybe the terminology needs to be under that condition is until such time as Living Waters Church relocates their operation instead of the Center for the Performing Arts becomes fully operational. John, is that, is that something the Center for the Arts can live with?
Yeah, we're, we're, we're fully committed that, that once, we are working with Living Waters Church to allow them to continue their organization until such time as, as they are relocated. The plan is sometime at the earliest, the end of next season, and at the latest, the end of next summer. So I mean, we have, we have no problem committing to that, that this will not be used as a place of worship after the Living Waters use is complete. And certainly, at the very, very outside, it wouldn't be beyond the end of 2014, more likely for everybody's interest, before sometime next summer at, at what we think is a practical latest.
Is that correct?
We don't want it.
Yeah, yeah, we have, we have no intention of it being used for a place of worship after Living Waters uses are completed. So it's a, it's a transition. It's not a, that's all we're asking for is that, is that that use to be temporary and transitional.
Mike, just a comment as to putting a timeframe, you know? What happens if we say, okay, at the end of 2014, you have to be out of this church? In the summer of 2014, we have a tremendous amount of problems weather-wise. We can't get it built. And come 2014, we tell them, y'all got to get out. I, I just don't think that's quite fair to put a timeframe...
Temporal.
On that transition period. And that's just my opinion. But I, I would say that, I'm sure that the church is going to work diligently to get out because they probably want to go do their own thing too. And then also, so I, I would have a problem saying you got to get out by X date. Because X date, there may be some things that we unforeseen that may happen. So I just have a problem.
Well, and again, I'm not here, and we're not here to speak for the church, but we are, but are contractually, we are set up in such a way that they are not, it's not going to be a simultaneous or a joint use forever. It's not open-ended.
Wes, that date could always be revisited as well.
Well, would they have to come back to revisit?
If I may, may I suggest that that asterisk language be changed? And remember also, the place of worship includes the religious services, but also the preschool. And it's conceivable that the preschool may be there a little longer or shorter depending on the movement.
Just, forgive me for interrupting, but the church is alre, I believe this is correct, the church is already not using the facility for preschool.
Oh.
Is that correct? Isn't that what we've been told?
They are currently using it, but they're in the process of moving that out.
So that'll be out earlier.
That, that, that use will be relocated to a different location than, than where their place of worship is going to be located. And they are already not using the facility for office space and administrative spaces. So it is, it is being utilized, yes. And again, I'm, these are just conversations we've had. But it's not being utilized full-blown as a church right now. They're using it primarily for the worship space, for nursery space, and for some preschool, but not for, and youth functions and things like that. But they're already sort of transitioning out of uses as we speak.
If I may tweak the language, and if Mr. Spear would like to listen, the place of worship, sanctuary and preschool under 100 children may continue to operate until such time that the existing place of worship moves out of the facility, at which time this use will no longer be permitted.
I think that works. We've got a wonderful working relationship with Living Waters people. We'll, this isn't going to be a problem for the community.
One question, yes, sir?
Just one question.
Excuse me, one second. Are you finished?
Yeah, yeah.
John, will the school move with them?
For the most part, the school, the, the school uses are already being transitioned out. And I, and our understanding is the school uses will be relocated before the place, it's the worship facility, it's the, the big room, the auditorium space will be the space that they need for their church services from, you know, until April, May, June, depending on when the, when their, their new worship space is done. And the sooner we get, and I'll be just very honest and frank with you, the contingent, the contingency in our purchase contract has all to do with getting this, this property rezoned. So we take that contingency off the table and our deposits become committed, so.
Yes, sir. Anything else?
I just have to, we talked about entertainment. What, what type of entertainment is it?
Artistic, all sorts of artistic entertainment. It'll be, let me invite Susan Bridges up. And this may be more in the form of a commercial than, than an answer to a question, but...
Same thing for having where they're at.
And I need to swear you in.
Okay.
Jesus Christ.
Hello, gentlemen. Please state your full name for the record.
Susan Bridges.
Do you swear from testimony you're going to provide is truth, whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Thank you. If you'd like to state your occupation and give us a short explanation of the Center for the Arts.
A commercial?
Yes.
Susan Bridges, the president of the Center for the Arts of Benita Springs. Thank you for letting us be here today. Is this, can you hear me? Yes, okay. All right. We will do dance, theater, and music performances, community theater with local people who want to study acting and perform on the stage, and a children's community theater program. Is that okay? Any questions?
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
I have a parking question, maybe back to Jackie. When you worked out the parking formula, did you take into account the usage in the second building? Did you take into account the, if it's going to be a performing arts center, the performers, you know, the staff who puts on the events, orchestras, that type of thing? And finally, did you take into account the area that's currently being used as a outdoor playground? Does that convert to parking? Did, those three items, were they, were they factored into the formula that you used to come up with the, and over and above the 399 seats?
On the, on the parking calculations, they were, they were right out of the Land Development Code. It's one space per three seats, so 133 seats. And we figured we'd have 30 employees there for 163 total versus the 191. Now, that's, that's total spaces. It's not paved versus non-paved, but there, there are more than adequate spaces based on those calculations. The only use, when that performing arts center is in use, that will be the only facility that is in use. So there won't be the need for additional spaces for something that might be going on in a multi-purpose building. That's the maximum usage. So we're comfortable with that level. Your other question, yes, the playground will stay there as far as I know. The, the Center for the Arts hasn't talked about moving it. They will have kids at times at, at certain events and maybe that will be utilized, maybe it won't, but they're not making any plans to rip that out right now. So, did I cover all the questions or did I miss one?
On the, the site plan that showed all the parking areas, did, did that include the playground area? I couldn't tell by looking at the site.
No, we didn't count, the, the playground area is paved, but we didn't, there's no, there's not really spaces in there. We did not count those toward the 191 that are existing, no.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions for the, from the board at this time? I would assume that then we have had our rebuttal to staff. Do you have anything else, Ms. Genson?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Then I would have public input. Anyone from the public like to make a comment? Seeing none, then we will move on. So we will bring it to the board then. Mr. Insirpi, you look like you're ready to go.
I'll make a motion that we accept with the changes that have been noted by the attorney.
And the two changes are the one I read to you just a little bit ago about the place of worship in the footnote, and the other change is to add the new condition four, which takes out the old condition four with A through G. That will all be removed with the new paragraph being added as shown to you by Ms. Genson.
Thank you. So, do I have a second?
A second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion at the, on the board? One comment I would like to make, from my personal standpoint, you used the word flexible today twice, and I like that. I like the staff to be flexible in, in getting things done and making us move on and bringing this center here without causing a lot of animosity or whatever word we want to use there. Thank you for doing that. I appreciate that. Go call.
Frank Miles?
Yes. I didn't, I didn't hear.
Richard Donnelly?
Yes.
Pete Pistori?
Yes, but I don't like the idea of exception. Thank you.
Roger Brunswick?
Absolutely, yes.
Mark Nussbaum?
Yes.
Robert Insirpi?
Yes.
Chairman Norris?
Yes.
Thank you. That concludes the cases today.
Okay. Thank you.
Good luck.
That's a nice addition to our city. Yes.